All right, it's six o'clock. I will call the December the fourteenth, 2021 meeting of the With County Board of Supervisors to order. Note for the record, we do have a quorum with all members present. Tonight, we have Pastor Kenny Questonberry of the Fort Chisel Church of God to provide the invitation. If you would please rise and remain standing for the pledge.
Thank you for the invitation. It is an honor to be here tonight and to share with you. Let's bow our heads for prayer. Heavenly Father, I thank you for this day and for this season we are approaching. I ask you for tonight, would you help, would you bless each member of this board, each participant here? Would you help us to operate the business of this county with integrity, decency, and in order? Help the mind of Christ prevail. Help us to have your mind. And I'll thank you and I'll praise you. In Christ's name we pray. And everyone said?
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda tonight is we have presentations of and adoption of several sports resolutions. I believe we have one person present for the George With Girls Track and Field Team. Mr. Terry, if you would. And I'm not sure who it is, come on up.
Faulkner. Yeah.
You may have more.
Okay. There might be one more.
Looks like you got one won now. I love to you, Mr. Terry.
You have three dollars in the over.
Uncommided, now we're good. All right, this is With County Resolution 2021 dash thirty eight. The resolution honoring the Girls High School, the Georgia High School Girls Track and Field Team. Whereas the Georgia High School Girls Track and Field Team completed a remarkable 2021 season, and whereas the Georgia High School Girls Track and Field Team is a state champion, class one A state championship at James Madison University in Ashenburg, Virginia on June eighteenth, 2021.
And whereas the following state championship titles were captured, the two hundred meter dash Haley Faulkner, time was twenty seven point thirty-four. The four by one hundred relay was Peyton Thompson, Ava Fowler, Mackenzie Tate, and Haley Faulkner. Time was fifty-two thirteen. The four by four hundred relay, Morgan Dalton, Peyton Thompson, Mackenzie Tate, and Haley Faulkner. Time, four minutes nineteen sec- nineteen point seventeen seconds. Whereas the With County Board of Supervisors officially commends the 2021 Georgia High School Girls Track and Field Team and coaches for their exemplary season and display of outstanding dedication and athletic ability. Now therefore be resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors presents this resolution to Georgia High School Girls Track and Field Team, state champions, in recognition and appreciation of their achievements. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors adopted this fourteenth day of December, 2021, signed Brian W. Valt, Chair. And I'll make that as a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve Resolution 2021 dash thirty-eight. Do I have a second? Have a second by Mr. Cook. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah. The other girls are, shouldn't be me here, we just left practice, but apparently they are. You want us to give those to you, Coach? And you can distribute them.
Yeah, I'll give them.
We certainly understand it's a bad time of year to try to get students out of here.
All right, this is With County Resolution 2021 dash forty-one. A resolution honoring the Georgia High School Girls Cross Country Team. Whereas the Georgia High School Girls Cross Country Team completed a remarkable 2021 season, and whereas the Georgia High School Girls Cross Country Team was the Mountain Empire District Champions and the region one seed champions, and whereas the Georgia High School Girls Cross Country Team advanced to the Virginia High School League's class one state championship at Gran Hill Park in Salem, Virginia on November the thirteenth, 2021, and whereas the Georgia High School Girls Cross Country Team surpassed the competition, earning the third Girls Cross Country State Championship title for Georgia High School and... Whereas the With County Board of Supervisors officially commends the 2021 Georgia High School Girls Cross Country Team, compromised of Carrie Sage Dalton, Morgan Dalton, Cameron Harden, Emerson Harden, Kaylee Temple, Kara Temple, and coaches, Coach G and Coach Julia Tomiak for their exemplary season and display of outstanding dedication and athletic ability. Now therefore be it resolved that the Georgia, that the With County Board of Supervisors presents this resolution to the Georgia High School Girls Cross Country Team in recognition and appreciation of their achievements. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be incorporated into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors adopted this fourteenth day of December, 2021, signed Brian W. Valt, Chair. And I'll make that a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve Resolution 2021 dash forty-one by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved and congratulations.
Congratulations.
Get him a little while.
Hey, that's a good problem.
Y'all are helping me. I thought this was track and field, not waiting.
What Mr. Terry is handing up now is the two thousand and twenty resolutions that the board had previously adopted when they were also state champions, which was spring of twenty-one to fall of twenty fifteen. So we all step up front here so we can get a picture of all of you there. Even though they didn't make it tonight, we do have two more resolutions. The first one being 2021 dash thirty-nine, the resolution honoring Davion Tillison for his achievements with Georgia With High School Track and Field. I'll entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. McRoberts. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we congratulate that young person. The next one is Resolution 2021 dash forty, the resolution honoring Benson Blevins of Georgia With High School Golf Team for his accomplishments. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Cook and a second by Ms. Lawson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we congratulate that young man. Next item on the agenda is citizens' time. We have several people signed up. You will have a three-minute time limit. You'll hear the alarm go off on your phone, but if it rings, don't make fun of me. First person signed up is Mr. Nate Montgomery.
Nate Montgomery, three eighty-five East Reservoir Street. Apologize for my decor tonight. I came straight from work and in no way is to diminish, you know, the meeting here tonight. Chairman Valt had a post the other day and Ryan and I were kind of talking on it and it got me to think and I was like, you know what, I should just go to a board supervisors' meeting and just talk to the board. Some of you I know personally, some of you I kind of know of, those of you that I know personally, some of you I know very well, go to church in rural retreat, and so I'm very involved in the rural retreat community. So even though I live in Withville, I spend more of my time on that end of the county. Good friends with David Manley and John Matthews. John's my neighbor. You know, they've done an amazing job over there at JIDA. You know, big news came in, everybody's excited, there's lots of things happening, there's lots of work to do. I genuinely encourage this board, as I did when the Expo Center was first being discussed in this room, I genuinely encourage everyone in here to do as much forethought on what's going to happen in this county in the next five years to ten years. It is going to dramatically reshape everything about this county. There's already, you know, rezoning requests in town. I'm also on the board for Hope Incorporated or for Hope. My opinions today are mine, that are not of Rural Retreat, United Methodist, or the boards that I'm on. But I've gotten a lot of information regarding housing, regarding the median wage at the factory. If you go to factories similar to that around here, you will, you know, observe and you can see in the factories that we've already got, a lot of these jobs are probably not going to be filled by people from here. People are going to be moving in to fill quite a few of these jobs. Housing is going to be a big issue. Land development is going to be a big issue. It already is. The price of real estate is rising dramatically. I know a lot of people in the county don't like to talk about zoning. I would encourage you to speak with your particular, the people that have asked you to represent them. People don't want to talk about consolidation in the schools. I would encourage you to have difficult conversations with your constituents regarding all of these issues. Don't let there be anything that you're like, well, that's off the table, we would never do that. I know that Indians, is that the end of it or is that a warning?
That's your three minutes.
That's three minutes. Okay. Well, again, I just thank you for your time and I encourage all of you to please do a lot of forethought with this. Thank you, Mr. Manley.
Thank you.
Next person we have signed up is Mr. Butch Questonberry.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Nate Butch Questonberry. I live in the Fort Chisel area. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the Fort Chisel Library that is trying to be established. This is not only a great opportunity for the members of our community, it's also going to be great for the students. Luckily, my kids, as they went through the Fort Chisel school system, had access to internet and was able to perform their work and things like that, but that is not the case throughout some of the Fort Chisel area. Where this library is being proposed and where the building has already been purchased is right beside the Fort Chisel High School Middle School area. It will allow kids to come there to be able to do what they need to do after school because as of right now, they have to leave the school premises at five o'clock. They go home, they got nowhere to go. Either their parents have to drive them here to Withville to the library or they have to go to a friend's house that has internet. So this would give them an opportunity and a place to be able to go, to be able to do homework, research, help the whole community as a whole. Okay? I understand that funding was requested from this board and was told that it was not available at the amount that they need. So I would like for you to take a little bit and reconsider that because not only will it benefit that end of the county, it will also help anybody that comes in, it will help With County as a whole have a better outlook from people from Withville. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Questonberry. Next person we have signed up is Tina Questonberry.
Hello, I'm Tina. I got Butch here tonight, by the way, because I have taken on the project too as well and I'm speaking on behalf of the library. And I'm also asking, please, to reconsider the $400 amount that we were offered and proposed. The reason is, as we went over at our library meeting, when the building was purchased, we actually was purchased by Joe Hale. The reason is, the library, I mean, the bank kind of backed out on us a little bit due to a large pharmacy, I'll leave it unnamed, that wanted the building. But we were determined to get this building and during COVID, they kind of shut down a lot of our fundraising efforts. We're back on track. We've done a lot in light of COVID to get funding going. But with this, if we can get the proposed amount that we need, that's going to show the banks that we have another income coming in besides all of our fundraising efforts and besides our back helping us. But what it shows is, it establishes that we have a fund coming in or money coming in so we can get this refinanced in the friend's name. That way, we're open for federal grants and other grants. As long as it's in a private person's name, we can't get the grants and the funding we need to pay this thing off quickly, get it going, get it established. Because again, like you said, we got kids that don't have internet. We got kids that don't have access to anything. We've got people who need jobs that they don't have the ways to get to Withville all the time to use the library computers up here to look for jobs. They can do that on our end of the county. We need this on our end of the county. Our end of the county is growing and it's just something that's going to benefit the citizens, the kids, everyone. But the reason we need this looked at again, again, because this is going to show profit, well, not profit, but income coming in so we can get refinanced. And that's going to show established income and open us up for the federal grants that we need because we keep getting blocked for that. Every time we take a step, we get knocked down by another hurdle. And that's pretty much why I'm here. I'm begging for money. So, again, and that way too, again, helps our fundraising efforts, which we've put a lot in. And y'all can all go to GoFundMe and fund, you know, give us a donation if you'd like because I have that established. But that's pretty much what I have to say as well. I'm just here, we need this reconsidered, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person we have signed up is Mr. John Diorio. Mr. Diorio?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to talk about the Fort Chisel Library. I wrote that down. But I'd also like to talk a little bit about the vision. I came to this town and county in nineteen sixty-nine. I don't think any one of you was born by then. I'm a lover of libraries. And when I came here, our library, the With County Library, was in what we used to call Kinston Miller Square. I don't know if you know where that is along on, I think that's Tazwell Street. Is that, yeah, churches further down. Two stores, two little tiny stores, and that was it. I wasn't disappointed. Where I grew up in Charleston, South Carolina, I had to go to a bookmobile, so no big deal. But we had some vision. Ruby Smith, Hopper Lazenby, and Brent Moore decided we needed a real library building and they went after it. Of course, they had some help. We had what we called at that time the With County Library Board, which is really what now is the Friends of the Library. We didn't have any, any authority over the library, we just tried to help. And we did build that library back in the seventies and since then, the people in Rural Retreat have put together some funds to build their Rural Retreat Library. Again, a vision. But there's been no library in the eastern end of our county. And that is outside of Withville, the most densely populated area of the county, Fort Chisel area and the eastern end. But then a friend, Joe Hale and friends, found a site and a building that could serve as a library for the people of that area. I think somebody's already mentioned that it really is the perfect site. You can't find a better site for a library. Now, going back to vision, I got to go back to my good old buddy Benny Burkett, Rich Valley friend. And he and the joint IDA and the board back about thirty or so years ago purchased a huge proper property for industry. And it sat empty for quite a while and slowly began to attract industry. And also, another board with the joint IDA's recommendation, spent quite a bit of money in flattening out some land and now we've reaped the benefits of that. Vision produced what I think is going to be the cusp of our growth here in the county. So, my point is, and I'm running out of my time and a lot of notes, but my point is that let's have the vision. We have, we have the site. We have a building. I think at some point, five, ten years down the road, if we don't have a library there, we're going to have to build one. That perfect site will not be there. And you have, and this board has, and our library board has, the opportunity to bring to our eastern end of the county, to the whole county, the fact that With County, With County cherishes education and education is found in the libraries. I'd love to sit here for the rest of this meeting. I know you guys are going to have a great time, but my daughter-in-law has a birthday dinner that started at six o'clock and I'm hungry. So I will be seeing you and I wish you the best.
Thank you, Mr. Diorio. Next person on the list is Ms. Frances Watson.
Well, I'm not going to be long. I just want to say, I know all of you support children, youngsters, and senior citizens. I know Coley McRoberts brought tears to my eyes one night when you were talking about a place for the young people to go, to keep them away from drugs and all that. That was, and I know Jamie, Mr. Smith, feels the same way. So I'm just asking, please, you know, we have a new industry coming in here. They're going to be building houses out in the Fort Chisel area. You know, they're going to have good jobs, good money coming in. They're going to expect a library. And we've got that opportunity, perfect opportunity, as everybody has said. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. You may ask.
And forgetful senior sis can use the library tech.
Next person we have signed up is Mr. Zach Lester.
Good afternoon, board. Just want to thank y'all for being here and thank you, Sheriff Foster. Thank the pastor for saying a little prayer for us earlier. Guys, I'm just going to talk about our water bill, reconnection fee. It's a little bit much. I was at home sick last week. They cut my water off. Forgot to pay the bill, my fault, I accept full responsibility. But the bill for two months was seventy-four dollars and sixty cents. The fee was seventy dollars. So the fee was even higher than the bill for the two months usage. I was extremely sick and ironically, my debit card, I'd lost my wallet two weeks ago. So I had to go to the bank, get the money out of the bank, try and pay the bill. No big, big deal. But I had a good speech tonight, kind of designed to make emphasis on how the system has been designed around these little nickel and dimes of the people. We've built this Goliath of a unfunctional government, but it really never does take care of the people. All it ever does is really kind of take every ounce of money that we have and fund wars in other countries and all this other stuff. So I think that there's a lot of focus we need to put on our government, how it maintains itself. And stupid little details like this water bill thing is something that we can focus on and I'm offering up proposals tonight too, to kind of resolve the issue here. The first, you know, for the reconnect, disconnection and reconnection, usually what happens, because I spoke with Mr. Crisp about this issue six months ago, I said, hey, I don't think that it's really helping our community to penalize people into submission the way that we're doing it. So if we embrace our community, it would be a whole different turn, it would set a good example. So the first proposal is, I, out of pocket, will pay the gas bill if y'all can provide a gas receipt and a mileage for the truck that does the disconnections and reconnections for that month. I will cover all fuel costs for that month for doing that. And the reason is, is I think that we can deduct that out of the seventy-five dollar fee and that would help our community out a lot. I don't have a lot of money, but I am willing to give whatever I do have to try and build up our community because I love it and I'm very proud of what we have. So little details like that. The second proposal is if you all can legally find a way to get me in access to the accounts, I don't want any money, but I may have to be put on a salary as a part-time employee or something like that for zero dollars a year, whatever you'll have to do to give me access. Two weeks in advance, if you can give me a list of all the disconnections coming up for the amount that needs to be paid and for contact information, I will personally reach out to every homeowner and resolve that account myself. That's going to save our county a lot of money, it's going to save us a lot of time, and it's going to build the community to set the example. So I'm also offering that all for free. I don't want anything in return. It's just a good deed to do for my community. And I think that within five years, I'm comfortable in saying, within five years, I can get our county down to zero water disconnections for the year. And would that not be something to be proud of instead of penalizing families who can't already afford a bill and tacking on a very substantial amount? Seventy-five bucks in today's world, I know it's not a lot to most people, but to a family that's struggling to pay their water, it is very important. There's only a few things in the world that are as important as water and it's a very cheap thing we can have. So I think that the county should reevaluate the situation, how we approach that part of our community and start to try and embrace people. Thank you all for everything you do. God bless y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Questonberry. All the citizens we have signed up, so I'll close citizens' time. Move on with the agenda. The next item is the payment of invoices. Each supervisor has received a copy of the invoices in their board package. Entertain a motion to pay the invoices as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Horni. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Cook. Is there any invoice that any member wants to pull out and/or discuss? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Smith.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of our previous meeting from November the twenty-third, 2021. Make a motion, Mr. Smith. Have a motion by Mr. McRoberts.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Smith. Is there any questions or discussion about the minutes? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote with Mr. Terry.
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is old business. Mr. Barrett, do we have anything under? Mr. Bear, do we have anything under old business?
I do not have any items under old business.
All right, the next item on the agenda is new business. The first item under that is Parks and Recreation, Mr. Kevin Williams.
Good evening. Just need to, just something, the recognition awards I had planned for tonight, both recipients are unavailable tonight as of like an hour ago. So that was, that was, so we'll just delay that until the, until next month when everyone can be there. But the next part up is just the revenue and expense comparison for the Roy Tree campground pool for this past season. I gave you all a packet. You may have seen this before, but attached to it is the Excel files of all the entry dates for the entire season and the expenses. If you look on that form there, it's split up between fiscal year twenty twenty-one and twenty-twenty-two, because camping season runs right through the middle of our two fiscal years. So I have to go from two different kinds of Excel files to combine into one camping season. But for the campground this past year, it was a pretty successful year compared to the past two years. This is all approximate values, because there's some expenses that we don't factor in, such as our county maintenance coming out and doing some bigger projects, or like our cost now for mowing is covered in another department, because that's contracted out and the campground and areas all included in that. But overall, the approximate revenue for this past season was about ninety-two thousand, seven hundred dollars. And that's from campsites and shelter reservations, as well as some of our bait and ice cream and wooden ice bag sales. But our expenses, majority of that was, of course, labor. And then we had some other expenses going on. That came down to about sixty-six thousand. So net profit is about twenty-six thousand, six hundred dollars. Compared to twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty, where those approximate revenue coming in for the full season was about seventy-two thousand, seventy-three thousand. This year was ninety-two thousand, seven hundred dollars. But there was, we did increase our rental fees for everything by about ten and a half percent to keep up with the current prices for campgrounds and reservations and all that. With that increase in percentage, we also had a revenue about, increase of about twenty-five percent for this past season. So the campground is going pretty good. We're able to cover our expenses and have a little bit of profit on the end to keep that going. Pool, on the other hand, well, as you all know, it's a recreational, community recreational facility, and view it as a commodity for the community. And each year, we try to at least cover our labor expenses. Well, minimum wage went up this past year, and I still stand by my side of, we need to pay our lifeguards, who are certified, a little bit more. So they could pay a little bit more than minimum wage to go out there and provide the public safety. We fell short this year by about six thousand, according to my record, or my calculations. But the overall operational expenses are about thirteen thousand, and labor expenses are about twenty-one thousand. So as I go down through here, there's ways that we can try to do, cut back on labor, but as far as like cutting back on lifeguards at times, I don't think that's a smart thing, 'cause if you have, we average about thirty, thirty-five people each day going into the pool. But most of our labor cost comes down to cleaning the filter system. That takes up more time. But until we can figure out how to invest more money into the pool area to revamp and replace that filter system, we're still gonna have to have about three to six hours to replace two filters, because there's, that's just labor intensive.
Not two filters, it's two hundred.
It's two hundred, two filter houses, but there's two hundred individual filters that we have to take out every time that the filters need to be changed. Because due to the agreement with DJIF or DWR, what they are known now, we can't backwash and have the traditional sand filter system, where you can just flip a switch and it cleans out and goes back. No, we have to shut everything down, pull two hundred filters out, put two hundred back in, clean those other two hundred filters, and it just takes a long time. But that's a discussion that we can have another time whenever we choose to start investing back into the pool. Because we're waiting to see if we're gonna have the contract approved. And Mr. Hankins has been working on trying to get everything from DWR down so that we can have that contract renewed, that we can be able to invest into it. 'Cause I understand that, you know, we don't know if DWR is going to pull the rug out from underneath us and just take everything back, so.
Since Kevin brought it up, the letters have gone out to the legislators asking them to ask the Attorney General's office to expedite their review of the lease. I've been in contact with Delegate Campbell this week. He, in the case, he received the letter and he's working on it.
Kevin, you talked about, last year, we increased the admission to four dollars?
From three to four, yeah.
From three to four. And it'd been three.
For, yeah, for at least twenty years.
You talk about increasing it again, next year, five dollars a person.
Now, that was my thought, but I was like, we could do that. But I think that would be shooting ourselves in the foot. But we'll just price ourselves out, because the town pool didn't increase theirs, and they're still at three, and Roy Tree's at four.
You know, and we talked about it when we increased it to four, it's three dollars when I was in high school, minimum wage was four twenty-five. Now it's four dollars, minimum wage is going to eleven dollars. In nineteen ninety-six, it was expensive to go forward. Now, that's another. Yeah, I didn't know what the town charged for.
Town still kept theirs at McWayne, about three dollars. The last I heard. And they also decreased, how many days that they were open this summer, too?
Is this expense, is this the pool or is this all?
That's just campground on that one. I didn't have the Excel sheet out for the pool, but I did write it up on the expenses for, in the narrative in the front.
Well, I know, we wanna thank you for your work this year, getting the pool open. I know that was a big thing, you know, that people wanted to see. And I know you certainly had a lot of time invested trying to figure out a way.
It's a struggle about every year. And I'm like everyone else, just trying to find the help to get out there. But having board's approval to be able to, and Mr. Bear's approval to hire people on and pay for their certification, and then pay them at a lower rate than someone coming in that's fully certified, that helped out to be able to get people that are, that are good workers to be able to come out, and that worked out real well this year.
Does anybody have anything for Mr. Williams?
I'd just like to thank Kevin. I know this is, we're talking about the Roy Tree pool and campground, but I sent Kevin an email thanking for the work he did for the progress for the council, for the, Kevin done a lot of legwork behind that. Some people may not know, but I want to publicly thank you, Kevin. I thought what you done, and I think it's been a big success.
And just to let you know, there were two more does taken down this week.
Yeah, I see.
And, you know, Decker, what Mr. Smith said, you know, talked about the pool and the campground, but, you know, that place has seen a lot of use over the past two years. And I know y'all have really worked hard to keep it. And I mean, it's, every time I've been out there, since y'all got the bear-proofed trash cans, you know, it's been spotless.
That's definitely have dealt much.
You know, they got full with the true retreat, everybody knows how the wind blows. And I've had a lot of confidence about them, just small improvements. I know we haven't done a lot of capital improvements, because we are waiting on, we're buying folks in Richmond, decide if they wanna sign that lease that they've had for, how many years, Mr. Bear?
Seventeen, I think, four years?
Yeah, about four years.
With their proposed language, the lease that they wrote.
Well, as soon as the, as soon as that comes through, I know I've got plenty of projects and I can use some capital money to put into it, so.
Well, I mean, you know, unfortunately, it's just not physically responsible to put a bunch of money in.
No, I mean, it's understandable. I mean, I'm just biding my time and we'll just keep chugging along. But no, it goes out, all that work and stuff goes out to our manager that has worked out there for the past few seasons, and she does a good job with that. And then our county maintenance crew being able to come in and do a lot of bigger projects. So, I mean, I can't take that thank you, but I'll pass it on to them as well.
Well, thank you, sir.
All right, thank you all. Have a good night.
You, too.
All right, next item on the agenda is the Friends and the Fort Chiswell Library, Mr. Stroup.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks, everyone, for letting speak tonight. My name's Tony Stroup. I'm the president of the Friends and the Fort Chiswell Library. And we had a, had a monthly meeting last Thursday. Mr. Smith, Mr. Terry, both attended, and they wanted me to go over what we went over at that point with the full board. So I gave you a packet here. We can, we'll get through here as quick as we can, 'cause I know I only got ten minutes. The group was formed so that a location could be purchased for use as a public library, as requested by the informal assembly of the With County Board of Supervisors, With Grayson Regional Library, Board of Trustees, and the citizens of Fort Chiswell and Lead Mines District. That meeting happened almost two years ago, February would be two years. The bank building, located on the corner of highways fifty-two and ninety-four and Fort Chiswell, was and still is seen as the perfect location. And y'all have heard from Tina, and, you know, we know it's right there at the high school. It's right there at the intersection of the two highways. Lot of traffic through, a lot of people come through the area every day, going to work, whatever, going to the grocery store. At the start of this whole thing with the bank, they priced the building to us for three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. And that's what was agreed on with them. And even with Kovik, we formed, we were incorporated. We started in May of twenty-twenty with our incorporation. We received our five-on-one, three-C nonprofit status in March of that year, or of March of twenty-twenty-one. We purchased the building, we signed the paperwork on the fifth of May, twenty-twenty-one. And unfortunately, Joe Hale passed away the sixth of June, a month later. Joe Hale signed on as a co-signer to start with. He was gonna co-sign for us. Well, the bank decided they couldn't do that. They needed, Joe needed protection as the co-signer. And so the bank's attorneys, Joe's attorney got together, and Joe actually bought the building. And we have a lease agreement, which you have a copy of there, with Joe Hale, and now his, which is now his estate, that we would pay the payments, the taxes, that kinda, that kinda thing. And that has kind of led to some problems, too, because there are grants that we won't qualify for, because it's a privately owned, even though we're leasing, it's a privately owned building. And, uh, excuse me, uh, we also, because we don't show a steady income at this point, we can't go to the bank and refinance and get Joe's estate out of this situation and try to get the, try to get the loan. We wanna refinance and get it in our, in the Friends of the Library's name. And that way, we, there's a lot of grants and stuff that we can apply for. And we have six years, according to the contract with Joe's estate. We have six years to pay the building off or refinance, or they take control of the building again and we're out. They can take the building and do whatever they want to at that point. So if we've got the building, the library established at that point, then we're back to negotiating some kinda deal with, with his estate to try to keep this building for the, for the library. Yeah, so we wanna try to, that's, that's part of the reason we asked for the twenty-two hundred dollars a month, because our payment is gonna run close to that. And we, I know that Roy Tree gets, only gets four or five hundred dollars a month, but we're in a different situation here. We've got a more expensive piece of property. We've got a location that's right in the middle of the community. So we need, we were discussing this with, with Grayson Regional Library. They returned a proposal, and they are proposing four to maybe five hundred a month. Well, if this piece of property, if the county was gonna rent this piece of property, or whoever was gonna rent this piece of property as an individual or from an individual, say for office buildings, whatever, you're gonna pay two or three thousand dollars a month. Those little strip malls at Fort Chiswell are twelve to twenty-five hundred dollars a month, just for a little section. We've got a whole complete building in a good location with a lot of property on the outside, a lot of room for expansion. When this process started, Earl Levy and myself, Earl is the vice president, he, we had a little meeting with, with Mr. Bear, and I made the comment that the county could just buy the property. And he said, that could always be a possibility. So, you know, we're, we would, would be up for that, too. We've got a piece of property that, according to, it's my understanding that the tax value is over five hundred thousand dollars. This building could be purchased by the county for three hundred thousand dollars. I think that's a pretty good, pretty good situation right there. So that, I asked you to consider that possibility. And if that's not a possibility, we need to negotiate some type of lease agreement with Grayson Regional Library. And we do know, from public record, White Top gets a thousand a month. That's in Grayson County. And then there are monetary, monetary contributions in the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one from the two counties. There were Grayson County at three-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-five thou, four-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars, plus the Town of Independence kicked in thirty-five hundred, which made a total of three-twenty-seven, nine-ninety-five. With County, three-twenty-four, four-fifty-five. Town of Roy Tree, thirty-one-eleven. Town of Whipple, thirty-five hundred, which is three-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand and sixty-six dollars from With County. And additional note here, we went back through the public records. It's all in, all in the minutes. Grace, or WGRL had a four-hundred-and-eighteen thousand unrestricted net position in twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty fiscal audit report. And they had a profit, and this, there's a copy of this in here if you'd look at it. They had a profit of eighty-five thousand, plus showing at the end of the twenty-twenty-one year end. So there's some money there. I don't know, you know, I don't know what it could be earmarked for, but there's money there that could be used toward this. And even if we make a deal with Grayson and we get what we need from them for the rent to pay this off in six years, we're still gonna have to come up with another couple of thousand dollars a month or so just to pay the building off and get out, if we don't get enough loans or enough grants to pay it off in six years. We're gonna have to raise enough, you know, double a month what we would get. Currently, we've, we've got some local, we've got some local donations. But currently, most of our money has. Uh, but currently, most of our money has come from RCI II Beck, who, which is a foundation, uh, roofing consultant institute that Joe was involved with for forty years. He helped set the whole thing up. He was a director of their nonprofit. They give us over a hundred thousand dollars at this point. We have been paying interest only as of this year. Uh, that was an agreement with the bank, starting in June. And we also have a three hundred and sixteen dollar a month escrow payment that goes to pay the taxes, uh, and our insurance. With that, we're, we're paying almost thirteen hundred a month out right now, at interest only with, with the payment on the bank. We will go to almost, or right at two thousand dollars in June, if we're gonna have to start paying out. So that's, that's, you know, part of the reason we're looking, we were asking for so, for that amount of money. And we feel that the building, like I said, is worth, at, at least at, it's probably worth more than that if it was, if it was rented out to an individual or some, some company or whatever. And I guess my main question here, just like I asked, uh, Mr. Smith, Mr. Terry. Right, here we are. We've got the perfect location. We've got a need, a big need for that end of the county. I mean, that, that can't, that, that, our, our end of the county, we contribute quite a bit of tax money. We've got quite a bit of businesses that, that, you know, we've got all the trucks, a bunch of truck stops on that end and, I think my wife counted up the other day. We had eleven, uh, businesses serving food right there around Fort Chisel. So we get a lot of food tax and stuff from that end of the county. So, we feel that, that, uh, the money, we can find the money to do this for the citizens. And for, for the citizens of, of that end of the county, because, you know, we've got people that's, right now, if you live in Barren Springs, you're either driving to Pulaski, Hillsville, or Whipple to go to the library. And, uh, that, that, that puts a lot of strain on some people trying to, trying to do whatever they wanna do as far as, educate their children or, or just to educate themselves. So. We appreciate you listening to us and we hope that we can get together. At this point, we feel like we need to get together with, uh, your board, the With Grayson Regional Library Board, and our board and maybe get together as a group sometime and try to work this out between us to benefit not just, not just the friends, because, you know, we're, we're here to benefit the whole county. We're here to benefit everybody. So, uh, thank you for your time and, uh, I hope we can work something out here. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Stroup.
Thank you.
Mr. Bear, is there anything you want to add to that?
No, I, I, I mean, I think all of us understand the situation, uh, that they are, they are in. This is the first time the real issue has come before the board. As I met with them out there, um, you know, indicated our, um, you know, I don't think there's anyone on the Board of Supervisors or staff that hasn't supported their library in the Fort Chisel area. Unfortunately, um, they're in a situation, Mr. Hale's passing has also put them in a bad situation of where they've bought more building than what they can financially afford right now. And nowhere in the previous discussion or discussions with the board was there discussions about the Board of Supervisors buying such a building for the Fort Chisel area or paying this level of, of rent for the Fort Chisel area. Mr. Hale had contacted me back when we just talked about it. He's like, if, if we get this building bought and purchased, will the library run this building? And I had conversations with Ms. Thomas. Absolutely. That's what we did with Royal Retreat when Friends of Royal Retreat going together and, and came up with the funding for the building. Uh, operational expenses are one thing. Two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars purchase expense, depending on what they've got there, is certainly, uh, another challenge. Staff is willing to follow any lead that, that you all have on this. You know, I, I'm not going to say that Mr. Stroup did not quote me correctly. I am in no way advocating for the county purchasing the building. Uh, that is not where this entire thing operated. If, if he asked me if we could purchase the building, yes, we absolutely could purchase the building. Uh, that, that is obviously a legal option that would be available for us to do so. But that is not, uh, the guidance that you all have, have given in the, the past on where we have with this library.
Could I make one more statement? I know where we started at with trying to do like we had, like Royal Retreat has been. But with, with Joe's passing and other little things, this situation is not the same as it was two years ago. I mean, we're in a little bit different situation right here now. And also, with all the, all the bills and stuff that has came out of, uh, of Washington lately, I feel like that With County could probably get grants to pay for this building a lot easier and a lot faster than we could ever do on our own. I mean, there's a lot of money that's going out for, coming out of Washington now for fiscal improvements and stuff like that. And, With County has the staff and the people that know how to apply for grants, and we're, we're still working on that. We're, you know, we're a fledgling group. Most of us that's, that's got involved with this had no idea what it would take to do this, myself personally. And we didn't have, we don't have the knowledge. We're working on it. We're working on getting information and knowledge that we need, and we've got some people helping us. RCI II Beck is, is working on this with our budgets and, and our finances. Hope Industry has been a big help to us. They're handling through a grant with, uh, with plan. They're handling our bookkeeping. RCI is, is gonna try to help us with our budget, and they're also helping us look for grants. But, uh, if we can come to some agreement, you know, and I, Mr. Bear did not tell me he, they would buy, but it was, it was, he just said it was a possibility. So I just wanted to present that to everyone that, you know, if, if, if we can look in that direction, let's look in that direction also. Because then the building would be secured and, because if we, if we, something happens and we can't pay for this building and the bank takes it back and we've already got that li- library established and it's up and running, where are we going from there? Are we gonna move it across the street, build a building across the street, or try to buy a piece of property? So, I mean, if we wanna get this going, we've got the site. We just need to try to work together to, uh, to try to get this, get this up and going and financed, whatever, whatever we need to do and in whatever direction we need to do.
Mr. Stroup, I know when we, we attended the first meeting, there at the church, uh, when the ideal first come about, there was a couple of different properties mentioned, one of which was the Head Start Building in Maximus, which is owned by the school board, AKA owned by the county.
Yes.
Did, did you guys ever look at that building or?
No, we did not, because it is in Maximus. It's not centrally located. And it's not near the high school. It's near the, it's near the grade school, but it's not near the high school and the middle school. And that's, that's one thing we're looking at, too. When there's a ball game or something, it's kinda scary, the way the kids come out of the high school and rush across the road to go over to, uh, Food Country or wherever, to kill a little time before they have a ball game or whatever. So, it, we, you know, it was mentioned before that maybe we could put in a, uh, the county could put in a crosswalk there, which would help. But the location, the location of that building is just perfect for, for, uh, the library, for the area. I mean, it's right there at the corner of ninety-four and fifty-two. There's thousands of people come through there every day. And it's, we got an opportunity to purchase, so we did. And we had talked about that building from the beginning, that it was, it was the perfect location. So.
Anybody else have anything for Mr. Stroup?
No, I mean, I think when Stacy and I was down there, you know, you know that there's nobody up here that don't support that end of the county.
Yes, sir.
As far as getting a library down there.
Yes, sir.
And then when we were talking about the, what Stephen was talking about and, uh, about With County could buy the, the building, the, I, I asked a couple of times about that, and I think I actually made the statement that I didn't think we were in the market for a building at that time.
Yeah.
So, I mean, for, from my standpoint, we, we'll, I have to get together. Uh, and if we have to get the Ms. Thomas and her board together as well, I mean, to see what, what options is available going forward, you know, I'm, I'm fully supportive of that as well. But we'll have to, you know, it's gonna take four votes on either board, uh, to, to make this decision. And that's, that's why Stacy and I wanted to make sure, uh, you know, you and the rest of the folks that's here tonight presented for the entire board. That way, things didn't get construed, you know, I may have took the note down wrong, Stacy may have took it down wrong.
Well, you know, we, we, we are presenting this as just an option. And I did, I have talked to some of the people at RCI Beck who have contributed all this money. And they, they have no problem that they have donated this much money that at this point, that the, that the county was to buy the building for what we owe against it. They have no problem. Their only stipulation to the whole thing is, is it, it stays the Joe Hale Public Library of Fort Chisel. They just, they wanna make sure that Joe's name is on the building. So, they won't be, uh, have, be any, there won't be any problem with them if you decide to buy the building. And like I said, as long as Joe's name is on it. And actually, that, that is just a, another suggestion to try to, try to get us somewhere where we can go ahead and get this thing going and, and not lose the building. Because like I said, if we get, we get to, we, say we agree to five hundred a month, okay, just hypothetically. And, okay, they go ahead, we open the library and six months or a year or two years down the road, we can't get enough grants because of the way the situation is. And the bank forecloses on, on it. Like I said before, what, what's, what's gonna happen to the library then? Or is it gonna close completely? Is it gonna have to just, are we gonna try to find another piece of property, building of the building? I mean, it could cause, we could have repercussions from that on down the road. And that's, that's one of the things we're looking at. But, you know, we're not here trying to make demands. We're not here saying you need to buy the building or you need to give us money. We're here to negotiate and try to get this worked out where we can get this, this going for everybody.
Well, the, the, the piece that I, I take issue with is if we're gonna have this negotiation before you borrow three hundred and seventy-five thousand on the bill. I mean, that's how government works.
Yes, I understand that, but we were told.
And Mr. Hale said on this board for eight years, he, he was well aware of how it worked.
Yes.
You know, we're, we're both, you know, we're both in a pickle and, and, you know, we, I, I think, you know, what Mr. Smith said is, you know, everybody wants to see it come to fruition. So, you know, I know you've mentioned grants and I think, uh, Ms. Questionberry mentioned grants. Any information you have about any grant money that's available out there, um, if you'll refer to Mr. Bear, Mr. Hankins, so we can look at that. You know, there's, there's grants out there for a little bit of everything and some of the stuff we're aware of and some of it not.
You know, in our defense, I, I do wanna say, we were told that we had to secure a building before we could go any farther with, with, with County or the board. So that's what we have done. I mean, you know, we were pretty much told that we had to do this on our own and get the building, get the bill, get a site, and then we could go from there. It just so happened, this turned out to be the site and, and what it cost. And we bought the building. We bought the building for way less than what, what the building is, the tax, uh, assessment is on. So, I mean, I think we got a deal on it.
But you didn't do what we asked. We asked you to get a building, okay, and what you've got is a payment. So you put the cart before the horse.
Well, that, that's the only way we could've got anything in that area, was have a payment.
Well, like I said, there's a building sitting up next to the elementary school. It may not be the perfect location, but there's a building up at the elementary school that's the Head Start Building, which is, there's nothing wrong with this.
Well, that, you know, we, we were just told to, I, I don't know what to say to that statement. Uh, you know, that was, that was mentioned, but, you know, the train got to rolling and we went on with it. So, you know, this is, this is where we at. And I know everybody here wants, wants the library down there. We just, you know, we need some help.
Mr. Bear, I know, um, we, they had a, a draft, um, budget for the operations that we've seen. Do you remember what, what the cost was on operations?
I do not, and I don't know if Ms. Thomas remembers or not. I, I don't.
I know I had a copy, but I don't,
Yes.
I don't know where it's at right now. And, and if you can, if you'll get that from Ms. Thomas and just send it to all the board members.
Okay. Well, thanks a lot. I appreciate your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Stroup.
Appreciate you listening to us and, uh.
We'll work on it. Unfortunately, there's not a good solution to, to, to it tonight, but we'll, we'll look at it and see what we do.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Bear, the next item on the agenda is the Pepper's Ferry Regional Waste Water Treatment Authority.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, every year we, uh, present this to you all to rest, uh, request approval. Uh, we have certain haulers in the county that, uh, are unable to discharge at our plant. And, uh, Pepper's Ferry allows us to enter into agreement with them, and we send them a list of the, uh, carriers associated with that. I would request your all's approval of this.
And you said haulers, and I thought you said hollers.
No, haulers, yes. Septic haulers, yes.
Don't use discharge and holler. Entertained a motion to approve is presented. Have a motion by Mr. Terry to have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Horni. Is there any question or discussion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So approved. Next item is the VDOT survey, exit seventy-seven, exit eighty improvements, which I'd like to see happen before God calls me home.
Mr. Hankins, Mr. Kinsler and I, I guess, sat in with a, a VDOT, uh, presentation a few weeks ago. Uh, and they just went through several of these scenarios, um, some of which, and I'll ask Martha, just to put it on page sixty-one, the spider scenario are probably not financially feasible. That was the first one, Martha.
For the record, there was swearing when we saw this.
Is, is this VDOT's new toy several years ago was roundabouts? And they wanted to build a roundabout everywhere.
Yeah.
And when I got that email and I seen Spider Bridge, I said, oh, I can't wait to see this.
Well, they, Spider Bridge, there's been like the Virgin Diamonds, all these different things on interchanges, even roundabouts slash what they call dog bone roundabouts, things like it. These are some of the scenarios they put out. I encourage everyone, uh, to, to go out, everyone in the audience to go out, look at, uh, this VDOT survey, uh, and, and feel free to throw your comments on, uh, out there. You can Google it if you want to, but Virginia.org slash eighty-one exit seventy-seven and eighty study, uh, will, will take you to that. Just sharing it with you all. Um, I was hoping to get a representative here, uh, to discuss them with you, uh, more in depth, but unable to do so. They will come back after the survey comes in and, and talk about some of the numbers. If you have any questions about them, um, I will try to defer them to Mr. Hankins. No, I would try my best to help answer any of them that you have. But right now, it's just trying to come up with solutions. And obviously, they know that, you know, the level of service levels that are there now, the level of service of, of what's expected. Obviously, we expect more traffic, uh, with our industrial announcements and, and more development to occur within the park. So, review, encourage, uh, your constituents to, uh, provide some feedback to VDOT on this.
If they build it at Spider Bridge, the county is gonna buy a tow truck and we'll have two libraries in Fort Chisel.
And I will say this, and because the- And I will say this because the absolute worst thing that was just sort of thrown out by someone in the meeting was that exit at seventy-seven, but you couldn't get back on until exit eighty. Or you got off at exit eighty and you got back on at seventy-seven.
I heard that one.
That is not feasible, it is not advantageous in any way that we foresaw. Fortunately, VDOT did not list that option in any of what they put out to the public. Don't shoot the messenger, that's all I can say.
The individual made that statement has never been to this area.
Moved out.
And seemed congested, all these people and myself and you have to go through, especially during the holiday.
Our weekend, our sunny day.
Or when there's an accident on seventy-seven.
Like I said, before God calls me home, I'd like to see something. All right. Do we need to take any action on that?
No, sir, no action.
Decide to shake their heads. Next item is the SS, STS Performance Agreement.
STS is our company to locate on lot number one. What you have before you is the Commonwealth Development Opportunity Fund Performance Agreement. We do not have a local match associated with this agreement. Our local match is the funding scenario that we have proposed to them. This has been reviewed by the JIDA, been reviewed by our attorneys. And I would request that the board approve the performance agreement with STS.
Entertaining motion to approve the STS Performance Agreement.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion? Here now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is the proposed opioid agreement with Mr. Martin. I'm a little upset that Mr. Farley is not here, but I understand he's at home, did get him a big order for the fiber optics. Finally has internet.
So, you'll recall last month, you guys passed a resolution accepting with county's goal in the opioid settlement agreements. It won't shock you to learn that the lawyers involved want to dot a few more i's and cross a few more t's. So, what we have here are three agreements with more granularity, essentially, three settlement agreements. Two of them are with Jansen, North Jansen, the other is with the distributors. Essentially, what those agreements do, gives a legal granularity and gives the defendants the comfort to know that once we get this money, we're not going to sue them again. That's essentially what it boils down to. And is there common in any agreement? We also have this escrow agreement. What that does is it states that if less than ninety-nine percent of the population of individuals involved in this settlement disagree and don't settle, then the settlement falls away. What that, and so it doesn't happen. The escrow agreement gives us the right then to pick up a lawsuit and go forward and move on, so it protects us. We've reviewed these agreements. These were drafted by our National Opioid Council in conjunction with the Memphis Attorney Department. And I recommend that the board approve or authorize Mr. Bear to sign these agreements so we can hopefully get this money and help with that.
Can we take action on all three of those?
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, entertain a motion to approve the participation form and the escrow agreement and authorize Mr. Bear to execute those documents.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion? Here now, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Anything else? Mr. Martin?
Yes, sir.
Next item on the agenda is the appointments.
I included that on there just for you all to be looking at and preparing for end of December for our appointments. And if you have any questions or anything, please let us know. Appreciate Ms. Collins getting that to you.
And we have Mr. Burnett and his attendants tonight, welcome, and be coming on in January. Did he get a copy of this?
I do not know if we gave him the appointment list or not, but we will give you a copy and we'll give one to him.
As I'm sure you've seen, we've got various boards and committees. So, if there's anything you're interested, let us know. Same goes for with Coy stepping off, it's going to create some vacancies and some shifts and some boards and committees. So, whoever's interested or want to change a committee or board or something, let us know and we'll try to put people where they want to. Anything else under appointments, Mr. Bear?
No, I do have one additional item of new business, as I mentioned, Mr. Chairman. I handed out a letter to you all and this came, as you are aware, Blue Star's proposal is obviously for the NBR plant to be on twenty-four A or twenty-four B. And then there are different glove manufacturing facilities to be located on twenty-four A. There's a rough sketch that I presented to you showing where buildings are going to be. B is basically to the right of the railroad track that you see coming in. This shows four of the proposed buildings with additional buildings to be added. All of this is currently at the end of E Lee Trinkle Drive, which means you end up with a tremendously odd number of, or differential numbering of buildings at the end of it. After talking with the company today, after talking to our GIS technician, I would like to recommend that we name the access easement, which is roughly highlighted in yellow there, that we go ahead and name that Blue Star Drive. And that way, it gives us the ability to give each of those buildings addresses off of Blue Star Drive as to where they're located. So, I would request the board approve the name of this road at Blue Star Drive.
I personally think if you make that type of investment, bring that kind of job, use your name and road after yourself. Have a motion by Mr. Cook, I have a second.
Second.
Have a second by Mr. Terry. Is there any question or discussion?
The only thing I was going to ask is, is that going to be a problem with Blue Sky Drive?
No, it's not. That's, I did check with the.
I'm not worried about the rescue squads, I'm worried about the truck drivers.
Yeah.
True story.
I hadn't thought about that. I mean, I was just wondering if maybe the company had something that might, would not sound like something else we did. I mean, I agree, I agree with you. Name it whatever they want to name it.
Yeah. I would say it would be better off to change Blue Sky Drive, but I don't think there would be. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, you got the wrong road. Anything else under new business, Mr. Bear?
No, sir.
Next item on the agenda, board supervisors' time. We'll start with Mr. Terry.
I don't think I have tonight, Mr. Chairman, because I want to wish everybody and their families a very, very Christmas, as I asked you before the Christmas holiday. And I hope that everybody has a blast.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Horni?
I don't think I have any complaints. I'd like Mr. Terry, I'd wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Mr. McCroft?
I don't have another thing to say.
Ms. Lawson?
Yeah, I had a complaint about speeders on St. Luke's Road on the paved portion. But Mr. Fowler's working on that. He's going to see if it's, if it meets the criteria for a speed reduction. So, he's working on that. And real quick, I want to thank all of the county employees that decorated their doors for our Christmas, or my Christmas doors decorating contest. It was really awesome. There were so many great doors. I think we had twenty. And we raised, I believe, last I heard was a hun, or two hundred and twenty dollars. And that will go to the charity that the winner chooses. And so, the doors were so great, I passed the judging on to someone else because there's no way I could choose. So, the, with county public school art teachers are working on that. So, just thank you all and Merry Christmas.
Thank you for supporting our staff. Staff enjoys doing that. I don't think Sheriff Foster, I gave our permission for our pictures to be on the one door, but I'm not sure if I'm escaping or getting arrested or what is going on.
They were good, they were all great.
I appreciate you doing that and staff really does enjoy it.
Mr. Cook?
I have my first one.
Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir, I have three things. I talked to Mr. Bear about this at the beginning before we actually started. But I did have the residents from Smith Road, they have presented a petition here to get their road under the maintenance and repair. So, Mr. Bear and I will work with those citizens and get a meeting scheduled with them to let them know what the options are for revenue sharing and what has to take place to get that taken care of. The other piece that I have, Mr. Stroup talked about, we did talk about this when we were at the meeting. Stacy and I was at the meeting with the Friends of the Fort Smith Library, the crosswalk. I know that we had talked about it before, the corner ninety-four and fifty-two. There is a lot of students crossing the road right there between events, and that is a dangerous intersection. Even with the red light there, it is pretty dangerous, especially with a lot of traffic. We just talked about the traffic that's on that road. If an accident happens on seventy-seven, the water's sound. So, if we can get with Mr. Fowler and see what we can do there, Mr. Bear, appreciate that. I know the children and the parents of the children will definitely appreciate that.
I won't try to say I was working during your all's meeting, but actually, I just sent an email to Mr. Hankins and the Mr. Johnny Kinsler, our county engineer. There used to be some VDOT Safe Route to Schools money that was available. And I asked Mr. Kinsler, as time permits, to look into that and see if there is any options there. It is probably one of the most needed crosswalks that we need.
Did we not talk about that a couple of years ago?
I think, yeah.
I'm talking about before. I mean, I remember we talked about it since you've been here.
Bill Vaughn had talked some about it before, probably before you were even on board. He had talked about, he had some kids in school there and saw it. And I don't know if he did any work on it or if the fund, you know, didn't come through on it, but we'll see what we can find on it.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Last thing I have, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bear, have we had any updates on the issues from Ivanhoe? The gentleman is getting impatient on making sure that the properties are cleaned up in that area where all the eyesores are at.
Yeah, Mr. Dunford, Mr. Dunford has been down there and has talked to the person who's creating the problems and has given them a timeframe for getting that cleaned up. I'll make sure that he follows up with them to make sure they're following their timeframe. He said that they had done some cleanup, but there was still a long way to go.
All right, I will pass this on to the gentleman, which I understand that, right?
Yeah, the property maintenance gives them thirty-day timeframe to clean up, so that's the first step he's done.
I will pass that along. He did reach out to me right before I left the house this afternoon, so that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Before I turn into Mr. Smith tomorrow, because I've got some stuff to complain about. But Sheriff, I felt, do you have anything to add? You want to talk about Friday?
Yeah, we'd like to talk about that for a minute, because as you all know, we done the shopping of the company and last Friday, we took over a hundred children shopping. Received a lot of community support from everybody. We've never had any trouble raising money for that at all. In light of the situation out in Kentucky, I talked with Chief Derek Brie Love down at Rural Retreat this morning, we got together. Their governor's wife had put out an urgent plea for toys for the children down there. I mean, not only do they don't have a house, clothing, anything else, we thought that might be a way to make Christmas a little bit brighter for them. So, we contacted Walmart today. From nine to three on Friday, we're going to have a toy drive up there. Anybody wants to buy a brand-new toy or something, we're pretty much going to load the police cars. If we got access to a trailer, we might utilize a trailer. We're going to take that out to Harlan, Kentucky at the conclusion of that. So, anything, anybody, gift cards are available. You can buy those in like twenty-five dollar increments, toys, electronics. They've got like four criteria that you can meet. And if we can get the trailer loaded on, make sure it gets to Harlan County, Kentucky for those kids.
And that's this Saturday, Sheriff Foster?
This Friday from nine to three at Walmart. Thank you for giving my time to talk about that.
Can we get a communication out with that?
It's actually, Channel Seven's running it right now. We've got it on our social media page. They picked up on it today and started running it too.
Mr. Bear, get your ink pen ready. First off, I'll just echo what everybody said. I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas. As you can tell from me and Mr. Bear's neckties, we believe in Christmas. Exciting, if you didn't see it, it's beside Blue Star, probably one of the most exciting things I've seen in four years is broadband. Mr. Hankins has worked really hard on that. And I've had questions from Baron Springs, Crawfish, do I qualify? So, Mr. Hankins, will you just give a quick tour of what this project's going to look like? Because people who live on dirt roads can't believe that they're actually going to have broadband.
Not just this county and the communities that are in it, but a lot of counties in southwest Virginia are asking the same thing. The governor announced yesterday, a two-billion-dollar investment in broadband. Roughly eight hundred million of that comes from the state. The rest is matched from federal dollars and from corporations, internet service providers who are going to help expand broadband. You probably saw air announcement, it's roughly one-third company investment, roughly two-thirds state investment. So, when you do the math on those, it's roughly thirty-six hundred dollars per address that they're going to pass with this three-county effort that they're doing. That wouldn't have happened if there wasn't the investment of the federal dollars. So, yes, the intent from Point Broadband, which was the company that won the grant from the state for our area. Their intent is to serve every unserved, that means you don't have any access or any hope of having access to broadband and internet at your house, and underserved. That means maybe you've got the old copper network passing by your house and you really, really want to get rid of it because it's not nearly fast enough to get you real internet. So, those two categories were qualified. Now, if you live in town, either in Rural Retreat where you have Shantel and Whiffle, where you have Shantel, and Austinville where we have Citizens Co-op, you know, those areas that already have service, the intent is not to serve those. There's still some sorting out to be done by the company. But, you know, everybody else who doesn't have access to quality broadband now is supposed to have it by 2024. So, it's not going to happen overnight. There's a contract that has to be signed between the company and the funding source. Once that contract is signed, they can order the supplies and start getting to work. I suspect that they've already got a lot of those because they were awarded multiple grants in southwest Virginia. They are already serving parts of Spedel and are rolling out into the rest of Spedel. I think they have another twelve months to finish that project, if I remember right. So, you know, there's still a lot of work to do, but there is some light at the end of the tunnel for those folks that are waiting on the ability to do medicine, to do education, to do business from home.
Thank you, sir.
And it's amazing the change of the year. Because, I mean, a year ago, we were going to the survey, we were getting the results in, and wireless broadband was the recommended option just because it was the only one financially feasible. It just, the federal money that's come into it, fiber wire to the home is far better than what we did before.
And one could surmise that if you currently have service with the company that is providing lackluster internet, that this would cause them to step up their game.
One would hope. I'm not going to guarantee that, but, yeah, you would certainly hope that they would. I will say, since we're doing this for the record, I want to thank Shantel for stepping up to try to gain the funds to be able to do the fixed wireless project.
Because we actually, we were part of two proposals.
We were. We found out about two weeks before our Shantel proposal was due that the Mount Rogers Planting District Commission intended to do a fiber to the home project with Point Broadband. uh, Point Broadband. Uh, DHCD told us to go ahead and submit both, uh, for funding, and, and so as they went through and they reviewed and they decided who was going to be more competitive, they, they did that on the basis of what gives you more universal service. And, and so we would have served between two thousand and twenty-seven hundred, uh, residences and businesses with a fixed wireless solution. It's, uh, closer to eight thousand, uh, unserved and underserved, uh, nine-one-one addresses in With County that will see the fiber to the home passing by. And, and, you know, you, you've already started kicking around some, some ways that this is going to impact our community, not just with the ability for, for kids to study, but, you know, it, it's going to do wonders for our real estate market. There are a lot of people who would consider living in With County if they had great internet, uh, uh, service. You know, if you, if you talk to our realtors, and I've had the opportunity to do that some over the past, uh, fourteen or fifteen months, uh, that, that's the principal complaint. You know, home values would be higher and, uh, home sales would happen quicker if some of these homes had access to quality internet. Uh, so we will see that change over the next, uh, twenty-four to thirty months, and, uh, I'm glad to see it happen. Um, and Stephen and I have talked about, you know, this actually frees up some staff time. Uh, I would have been managing a fixed wireless, uh, uh, implementation. Uh, this Point Broadband, uh, implementation is, is on the company, so the, the county doesn't have any direct involvement in how it rolls out. So we're not going to have, you know, say, but we're also not going to have to invest staff time, um, other than coordinating, coordinating with the company. And as I indicated to you and I, I notified you that the award had been made, um, we've already reached out to Point Broadband and, and said, are there ways that we can help you, or are there ways that we can help publicize, or is there information that we can roll out to the public about when they might be able to expect, uh, implementation in their, their area?
Well, thank you, sir. Um, the next thing I had, the Supreme Court has changed, uh, the thirtieth as a holiday.
Okay.
So all the courts are, are going to be closed. Um, I'd ask for the board to consider giving the thirtieth off as an additional holiday if somebody would like to make that motion.
Somebody?
I have a motion by Mr. Terry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Lawson. Is there any questions or discussion? Here and then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations. Um, trash centers had somebody contact me that was on a walker and was told that, uh, the attendants could not assist her because of COVID, getting her trash out. It was one of the ones in Rural Retreat, that's not acceptable.
Rural Retreat Center?
And we've had this discussion at least once before.
You don't have to tell it to me now, but did, did they mention who the attendant was?
No.
Did they?
No. And, uh, actually this coming through a third party, they called Dr. Hausman to play. Anybody in Black Lake District needs to contact me, go through my sister, Dr. Hausman. And, and I also had issues the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. They, they closed early and, I'm like.
Yeah, closed early.
Like five, seven minutes before time to close, I mean, they shut the gate in my face, so, you know.
In your face?
Yeah.
Well, I can understand that.
So y'all were voting to get my bones. And, and I talked to Mr. Bowers about that, but I never got a follow-up.
I, I did, he called me and gave me the information and he had immediately talked to me and him about that, so.
Um, the next thing is, you know, January first, the minimum wage goes up to eleven dollars an hour. We've got two custodians that make eleven dollars an hour now. Uh, we can't have that. I mean, they're hiring people all day long, with Bo James for fifteen dollars now. You know, we, we've talked about, and this is the first time in four years that the custodial staff has been fully, fully staffed. I mean, do we have a, you know, do we have a plan for that? I mean, we can't ask them to do that for less than what they get paid once they register chicken place.
We've been talking about that in several salaries in the process, and, uh, if you'd like, at the December twenty-eighth meeting, we'll, we'll present some proposals for you all to, to look at.
I mean, it, it is what it is, but I mean, you know.
Yeah, that, yeah, well, during the last budget discussion, that was some of our discussion. I mean, you know, when you look at it, you know, in a couple of years out, thirty-one thousand dollars is minimum wage. Um, and we have a lot of staff in that upper twenty, lower thirty thousand dollar range, and that whole, that whole compression factor kicks in. So we, we have got to continue, you know, you, y'all did some progress last year and appreciate that. We've moved, uh, several of the departments up a little bit. We have more departments that we need to continue that with.
Well, just put something together and, you know, we, we need to, it's unfortunate that I didn't keep up with it, but this year went by really quick, so. But that's all I have. Does anybody else have anything? Mr. Baird?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman, I do not.
Mr. Hankins?
Uh, just would mention, we do have, um, fire, uh, firefighter applications out, um, so folks who are watching, who, uh, know, folks who may want to serve as part-time firefighters, uh, doing daytime coverage at the Max Meadows Fire Department, those, uh, those are out. And we always have, uh, job openings for dispatchers. So, um, we, we're accepting applications now and eager to, uh, see who might be interested.
And we're glad that that broadband project frees up your time, but I guarantee you that we will find something to occupy that. Yeah, I have something. Speaking of firefighters, how are we coming on the dispatch center as far as getting it fully staffed?
Uh, we have, uh, the job advertisement out. We, uh, are adding a new position, um, the Deputy Director, uh, position, and, uh, we finalized the job description today, uh, so the advertisement will go out this week, uh, for that position as well. And one of the qualifications that we're looking for in that person is somebody who's good at recruiting and retaining, uh, employees. Uh, we, we want to do, do both, make sure that we, we attract them, we train them, and we keep them happy so that they stay here longer. So, um, really looking to try to get that person on board early in the new year, i- if at all possible.
Anything else that you could?
No, I just, that reminded me. Mr. McCroft?
I want me at your, uh, meeting with the Apex Authority, uh, Thursday. That's my thirty-ninth birthday and, and, uh, I'm going to enjoy it with my family. So go and look for me.
Is it your birthday? Really?
Thursday?
Thursday?
Well, happy birthday, Cory.
Happy early birthday.
If you've been here, I bought you a gift.
You did, you did.
No, no.
Thirty-nine.
All right, we'll be at recess until Thursday at six o'clock.